One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Martin, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Here.
Martin. Pollocka.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
And Mayor Folter.
Here, thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I support.
Moved by Pollocka and supported by Piana. Any discussion? Martin, would you call the role again?
Okay, councilmembers Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
And Mayor Folter.
Yes, thank you very much. The agenda is adopted, and the agenda is actually very brief for this special city council meeting. It's one item, and that is to hear an update on the 360 project. As many of you probably remember, it was last March that we entered into a 12-month exclusivity agreement, known as an ENRA, with a development company on a possible development in our downtown for parking and retail and office space. So they have been hard at work, the city has been hard at work, and there's been a lot of activity behind the scenes. But tonight is an opportunity for the developers to share with you the latest concepts in the project. I just want to be clear that tonight isn't about council taking action, so that we won't be voting on anything tonight. We won't actually be discussing the legalities or the finances or really even the parking so much, since we had the presentation about the parking study at the last meeting, although I'm sure parking will come up as part of this project. But really, tonight's presentation is about where the developers are with their latest on the concepts for the project. And Derek Delacorte, why don't you introduce what we're going to do this evening?
I'd be glad to, and I will keep it brief. And in fact, you mentioned a lot of what I will mention here briefly. We're here tonight to update city council on the 360 project. It is the second part of an update. The first part took place a couple of weeks ago with the parking. And this is the second part of that, how this development and the numbers for the program match up with those proposed parking and the findings that were presented as part of that meeting. We are not here, again, asking for any approvals nor recommending council approve the sale of any property or any above-ground development at this time. This is more to update you on the process that's gone on so far. We do have representatives from the development team here. There's a representative from MEDC who's going to talk briefly. And I believe we may have someone from Oakland County here as well at some point that wants to say a few words. We have started the process of discussing a development agreement, and really, that can't go any farther until this part of the process moves forward and that we have some understanding of the numbers, the square footages and the parking numbers, and that everybody's on the same page with that. And then if it's determined that this will go forward, we would move into the next phase with development agreements and above-ground development discussions. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the development team to get started. And obviously, I'm here to answer any questions now initially, and then throughout the process, we'll be here as well.
And let me just say, just for the folks in the audience, that we'll treat this like any presentation that we would normally do at a council meeting. So we'll give the presenters an opportunity to make their presentation. I'll give council an opportunity to ask any direct questions that they have. And then we'll open it up to all of you, three minutes, like we would normally do at a public commentator meeting. And we'll do this until, I don't know how many comments and questions we'll have, we'll do this until about 5:00 to 7:00 because we have a 7:00 PM regular city council meeting tonight. I will tell you that if we don't get to all your questions and comments before now and 5:00 to 7:00, we still invite your questions and comments. And Derek, where can people send those to?
Well, the best place to go is to go to Ferndalemoves.com, and it has a link for an email address to provide comments. And then our website will also have a link with the email address for any comments or questions related to the project for those to get directly to us. And that'll be up tonight as well.
Great. Thanks. So with that, Jake, are you going to kick it off?
Yeah, I'm going to provide, thank you. And thanks for having us back. I'm going to provide some quick overview of the agenda this evening. So we have MEDC here that's going to talk a little bit what's going on in the state and how this affects jobs in the region. We're going to turn it over to CBRE to talk a little bit about what they're seeing in markets. Then we're going to have a presentation from Krieger Klatt on the updated designs. We'll have Dennis Griffin from our team talk about the program status and how the business is going for the next steps, and then I'll provide some closing remarks.
Excellent.
So with that, I'd like to open it up with Emily Collins Hamel from MEDC to come up and talk a little bit about what's happening in the state and how this affects jobs.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Mayor Procham, good evening. Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Emily Collins Hamel. I work for the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. And I'm actually on the business attraction team. And I'm a member of that team that focuses on attracting tech companies to our state. And actually, I am here with another coworker, so I wanted to make sure to introduce him because he's someone that you should know, Ricardo Gonzalez. He's actually your new business development manager for this area. So all of your existing Ferndale companies, when they have questions about utilizing state resources, he is going to be their contact. So I'm here in support of him and also in support of our local partner, the city of Ferndale. So once again, I'm here as an informational, you know, kind of source for you, just to be able to talk about what's happening in the state of Michigan and specifically with tech companies coming here. The tech industry employment, so this is based, a lot of these stats are actually in one of our partners in Oakland County, Automation Alley. They do a technology outlook every, I think it's updated every two years. And so this is based on some of the studies that they've done. And so the tech industry employment in Metro Detroit is up 15% from the previous year's study. Metro Detroit's technology sector has added more than 30,000 jobs. This is 2011. Actually, that number has only been increased on. A lot of the manufacturing jobs that are being, you know, kind of happening now are technology jobs because so many of the people that are being hired, it's not simple, you know, it's not skilled labor solo. It's actually, you know, they have skilled labor, but they also are being able to do that within the component of using technology. So a lot of these jobs that we are adding that are referred to as tech jobs, you know, these are jobs that are putting together some of the vehicles that are on the road today. And so that's, it's a spectrum of that, all the way to people who are doing software development. So when I attract tech jobs, that means I talk to companies that do a lot of different things. And so that's something that I just wanted to kind of make sure to touch on is that it's, technology touches so many different companies and so many different sectors that it's definitely a wide label. Nearly 10% of total employment in the Metro Detroit area is tech-related, and that kind of goes back to my previous point. And so I have, in the, just the last month, I've talked to automotive companies, cybersecurity companies, companies that contract with the military, companies that do software development, build mobile apps, design, you know, gaming, even film industry, so like a production studio. So these are the kind of companies that I'm talking to, which is all you could say are tech jobs. So, there we go. Michigan is home to more than 9,000 companies offering IT services. A lot of those IT services, I just want to say, again, very widespread. You can be back office IT services for a law firm or an accounting firm. You can offer IT services, again, making websites, mobile apps. So again, it's a very, you know, IT, much like, you know, information technology. It's a very wide definition. Detroit's IT sector, which Metro Detroit, I should say, it's over 60,000 people. So that workforce is, it's a very robust and growing workforce. And those are very high wages, I would like to say. That is one of the assets that I see in technology jobs, is that these are high-wage jobs in comparison to the average income. The Detroit region is home to a highly recruited workforce, graduating nearly 3,000 computer science professionals each year. These are the people that oftentimes these companies, technology companies, want to be hiring these people. And so the more technology companies that we have here, which is, this is something that I care a lot about, I always try to tell my companies, when I attract them to Michigan, we have the talent here. We grow it here, we want to keep it here. And then, on the other side, I really want for the jobs to be here. So then that way, when we do graduate 3,000 computer science professionals every year, they have a reason, you know, they can stay, they have employment here. This is, you can just kind of compare the technology industry employment. The graph on the left is Midwest, and so the, you know, some of the other areas that we can compare to, Chicago, Greater Detroit is, so just under 250,000. And then Minneapolis, St. Louis, you can kind of see that comparison. And then just so you can see against the national, and again, this was 2011, so if you want to see updated numbers, by the way, Automation's Alley, Automation Alley's Technology Overlook event for the new updated numbers are being presented this Thursday morning. If you want an invite to learn more about technology with updated data, let me know, because I'll get you an invite. But anyway, so the Greater Detroit, as of when this data was published, was, you can see, only, you know, Dallas and Boston has more, but we were above San Jose. Like I said, I think that those numbers are, have changed, but still, we have a significant technology industry employment numbers when you look comparatively. And finally, I talk to these tech companies, and a lot of times, they really do want urban density. And as someone who likes to come to Ferndale as a, I guess, a consumer, my understanding is, you know, Ferndale's diverse, progressive, bikeable, walkable. And you have a lot of people colliding with each other, and that's kind of one of the reasons why you're such a special city. And just based on my experience, this is what tech companies want. They, this is the environment that they'd like, and their employees want this environment. So just an overlook, this is something that I have similar conversations with the city of Grand Rapids and city of Kalamazoo. I've said similar things to them, so, as well as some other communities that are smaller than that. But just in terms of what these companies are looking for, when I track them to the state, you guys have it. So thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Emily.
So on the tech job front, I mean, this hasn't, the message has been very consistent. And I'd like to thank the MEDC for providing support, not just for, you know, Ferndale, but just in the greater region. A lot of the programs have helped companies like my former company and my current company grow. And that's really important for getting people to come back to Michigan and as well as retaining talent from people that are graduating from our universities and colleges. So next, I'd like to invite up Brendan George from CBRE, who has a lot of experience in the market today and can talk about what he's seeing and what's happening.
Thank you. I'm Brendan George. I'm with CBRE. We're a commercial real estate services firm based in Southfield. I'm an office specialist representing both landlords and users who are looking for office space in the market. The development team has asked me to spend a brief couple moments with you today, just to talk about what I'm seeing in the marketplace overall, in terms of demand and where we see the, you know, projects going forward and where we see tenants wanting to be. Basically, I can tell you without exception, the demand we're seeing among tenants is to get into urban spaces, and that can mean a couple of different things. Markets here locally that have had very high rental rates and reducing vacancies include Birmingham and Royal Oak. Vacancy in each one of those markets right now is hovering in the single digits, 5% to 7%. We see higher rental rates in those markets and tenants signing longer-term leases. The more traditional markets, like a Southfield or a Troy, are doing well, doing better. There is positive absorption among the, all the markets, which simply means there's more space occupied over one quarter over the next. So the graph is, you know, the needle is pointing in the positive and the right direction, but there's no question that tenants want the urban experience. They want to be able to live, work, and play in the same space. They want to spend less time in their car. I can tell you with my personal clients, again, downtown is becoming a consideration, but oftentimes, there's a concern about how long it takes to get there. And then if you have a snow event like we did a week ago, I mean, I can see the cars backed up on 696 and the lodge for my office. So these, what we call urban suburban locations, like a Royal Oak and Ferndale, are really perfectly located because you've got accessibility to the highway, but you still have the restaurant and the residential density downtown that people are really looking for. Various tenants that, you know, I've worked with and that have been active in the market, these names may or may not be familiar with you, but for example, AutoTrader, V-Ride, Echo Global Logistics, Vectorform, which is a tenant in Royal Oak that we saw recently lease, the former Barnes and Noble space in Birmingham. You've got the new construction going on currently on Woodward Avenue. There's two tenants that have leased there. That project was 85% pre-leased before construction started. And again, that's an indicator that the demand is there, and we expect that that's going to continue going forward. I certainly believe that the 360 project is the right project for this location for a couple of reasons, mainly because you are delivering parking, which is essential, because not everybody's going to live within proximity to be able to, you know, walk or bike each day. So it's important to deliver that as part of the project. But you're also delivering a variety of spaces, size-wise. Now, I think that's important. Rather than building one 180,000-square-foot tower that, you know, you could potentially lease to one tenant, and then 10 years from now, if they decide to vacate, you've got a big problem in terms of re-tenanting that space. By delivering a variety of floor plans and size of spaces, you can really mitigate those concerns in terms of doing a single building with a single tenant. You want to be able to diversify and be able to attract both 1,000 and 1,500-square-foot tenants as well as 20,000-square-foot Just making sure I made all my points here. The last point I would want to make is, any ground-up development, there really is a key component to that, and that's what I'll call project certainty. So if you're a tenant that has to sign typically a five-, seven-, or 10-year lease commitment on a building that doesn't even exist, it's very important that you have a confidence level that in executing that lease, your space is going to be delivered. Because that's typically an 18-month to two-year timeframe. So it's important that the tenants understand that there's municipal support and that they have a comfort level with the development team. And those are two really key components that I would encourage you to stay focused on, and certainly with this development team here. And tell you, any of my clients would be very supportive and willing to move forward. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. There are a few seats up front, I know, for your latecomers. Nobody likes to sit in the front row, but we, there are a few more seats if you'd like.
Thank you, Brendan. And a few comments on the 360 team is, we did go out and speak to some friends of ours that, you know, we knew were active in the market. And you'll hear about this more from Dennis, and I'm sure you'll, you kind of got the, a lot of the message already, is that we have to know that we have product to sell to tenants. So we're at a point now where we can't advance any further without a commitment. And as part of the process, which we're all going through together, that's one of the big next steps, the saying, it's going from, we like this, we're thinking about doing this, it's an opportunity, to, yes, we're going to do this, now we could start leasing. It's not quite a chicken and egg issue, it's more about just getting that and advance the next step. So I'd like to invite up Irene Spanos from Oakland County to speak a little bit of what's happening just within our county a little more locally compared to what's happening overall in the state.
Good afternoon, little mayor.
Yeah, hello.
I'm here to support this project for many reasons. As you know, I'm the Director of Economic Development and Community Affairs for Oakland County. I work on job retention, attraction, expansion. We have a small business center that we work on, finance group. This project is important to us from an economic development standpoint for many reasons. The top three that come to mind for me are, it fits in with our Tech 248 initiative, and Tech 248 is our latest economic development initiative. We've found out that we have 2,000 IT tech companies in Oakland County. These are IT software companies, they are game development companies, they are cybersecurity companies, they fall into the connected space era. So we've launched this initiative to help grow the sector. And from our Emerging Sector Program, IT and tech has been our largest, our most successful sector. Just last year alone, we had 17 companies locate in Oakland County, creating over 2,000 new jobs in the county and investing over $22 million in our community. And these are the kind of jobs that our young people, our children want to work for, companies and products that, that our children will stay in Michigan for. So it fits into our economic development strategy, having a place to promote these companies. They tell us, again, they want to be in an urban environment, they want to be in a walkable community, and this project fits in perfectly with what we're trying to do at the county to attract these type of companies. And we are actually going to, we have, we go around the world recruiting companies to Oakland County. Two cities that we're really focusing on this year are the Silicon Valley area, San Francisco, for tech companies, and venture capital firms, because venture capital firms want to locate near the technology companies. So we're going to be doing both. And then Boston is another area that we're going to be really focusing on domestically. Internationally, we have, we have projects going from France, Europe, UK, Germany, China, Japan, and all of them are industrial, and most of them are the engineering, the professional skills, high-wage, high-knowledge-based jobs that we're going after, and that we have projects working on currently. In terms of this project, I talked to our planning department that, you know, works with your community on the Main Street program in downtown Ferndale, one of the award-winning Main Street programs, which we're very proud to tout nationally and globally. We think this will fit in perfectly with their plans in terms of creating the daytime traffic. And these positions are more high-paying jobs, more in the high-paying aspect, so which allows more disposable income to spend in our local businesses, restaurants, and businesses. And the third reason is Jake Segal. I didn't think Jake is related to, I want to support, and I'll tell you why. Because when he launched Livio Radio here in Ferndale, and as that company was growing, and it was looking to be something successful, I know for a fact, a lot of communities tried to recruit him and his technology company out of Ferndale into, not only around the state, but around the country. And his dedication to Ferndale, he flat-out said, Irene, you don't have to worry about me going anywhere. I am committed to Ferndale, I'm committed to locating in Ferndale. And for a community, who would you, I mean, there's no better partner than somebody that has already demonstrated their commitment to the community and to the business environment locally. So thank you for this opportunity to share my support.
Thanks. To the chair, I'd like to ask, actually, how does a recruitment through these various tech companies come into Ferndale particularly?
How do we go about finding these companies?
Yeah, or how does Ferndale find itself attractive to these companies particularly?
Oh, well, the livable community, the artistic community that exists here in Ferndale, the downtown, the Nine Mile. We take companies right down Nine Mile Road, and they, that's the kind of community they want to locate in. These tech folks, these young entrepreneurial companies, they're looking at the opportunities to collaborate with other companies. And how they call it is chance meetings, you know, where they meet at a coffee house, they meet at a restaurant, and then a business comes out of that. So they want more of those type of opportunities. And we, I mean, this, this community is perfect for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Irene.
Thank you. So next, I'd like to call up Krieger Klatt to walk through the updated program. And to kind of set the stage, literally, for this, we had a lot of comments from our four community stakeholder meetings, from business owners, property owners, residents, and I think we had the DDA meeting as well. So it was very important to me and our team that we took that feedback and then, at least the constructive parts, we can pull out of that and then make modifications. So I'm very excited to be presenting this and show you guys what we were able to do from the feedback we received from the meetings.
Excellent.
Good evening. Jason Krieger with Krieger Klatt. It's good to see everybody again. I've got Jeff Klatt with me, right here. And as Jake mentioned, what we did after the first meeting was, we had many design meetings after that, working with the city as well as people in the community. And what I want to do is touch on a handout that you guys have in your packet. And what it does is, it talks about the before and after differences. And then I'll lead into the graphic presentation. So some of the main points that I want to address, the changes, one would be parking spaces. The original presentation had about 875 spaces total between the two different sites. Now we have about 1,000 spaces. So it's plus or minus 125 space increase of about 15%. That came from recommendations from Carl Walker, Republic Parking, the public DDA feedback, and city feedback. The office components also varied a little bit. 160, which is above Troy, stayed about the same as far as the footprint and the square footage. 260 decreased a bit from 60,000 square foot floor place to 50, or from 60,000 square feet to 55,000 square feet. And 360 went from about 75,000 square feet to about 65,000 square feet. We lost about 15,000 square feet, roughly 8% in the office space. Where that came from is because of the recommendations from the city, staff, CBRE, and us bringing the massing down on the projects. One of the biggest issues that we heard from the initial proposal was the height and the potential for it to be imposing on the community. So what I'll show you is how we proposed to bring the scale down, step it back in, and hopefully make it more accepted in the community. Lastly, would be the West End lots.
Can I get one through?
Oh, sorry. Lastly, would be the West End lots, probably better.
There you go.
The initial proposal was eight to 12 stories and about 100 to 120 units. We proposed to decrease the height of that down to about five to six stories and roughly 90 units. And again, the recommendation came from the feedback that we heard from the city. So now what I'd like to do is walk through the graphic presentation of where we are today. Some of these slides you're going to recognize from our initial presentation. I may gloss over some of them because they are things that you have seen before, but I'll stay on some of the slides where we had the most changes. So these are the two sites, Withington and Troy. This slide right here was one of the original ones where we had our site analysis. And what we're showing here really is the streets. The yellow represents parking, the blue represents business, and then the purple, which is a little hard to see, represents the residential. This right here is a new slide, which really shows some of the feedback that we received and some of the items that affected our new design. So number one, which you'll see around the development, was us trying to step the buildings back to respect the neighborhoods. We were concerned with sight and shadow lines. Number two is along Withington. Initially, the parking deck was closer to Withington, and we had a little bit more space along the alleyway. What we did was, we slid the parking deck to the south. And what they did was, it tightened up the alleyway a little bit. It's still usable. It's a vehicle and pedestrian alleyway. But what it gave us was much more green space along Withington, and I'll show you that in a little bit. Three is maintain pedestrian connection from Withington to Nine Mile. In our discussions, it came out that this little cut that comes off of Nine Mile also pretty much ties back into the neighborhood. And a lot of people from the neighborhoods will cut across there and then go through the parking lot and then the Nine Mile. It also helps to split this long block, and it really just helps to increase the pedestrian circulation around there. So what we did in our design was, we actually incorporated a cut through the parking deck, and it becomes a really nice access. And it also ties in very well with 260, which is in the middle here, and creates a great point of entry for the office space. Number four is to maintain existing access points in the parking deck. That is something that we decided to keep here and here. We didn't get any negative feedback on that. Activate, it works like that right now, and it seems to be successful. Or five is step the buildings back to maintain access to sunlight views. Six is activate existing alley through design features. So in our design slides and discussions, we looked at a couple of ways to improve this alleyway. We hit everything from, you know, perhaps doing growies and green things to what we have now, which is much more simplified. I think it works. It would be almost impossible to grow anything along that alleyway. Number seven is locate main parking access away from the corner for safety and congestion. That refers to Troy. Our initial proposal had the drive aisle right at the corner, and the new proposal moved it inboard. And the only access point now at the corner would be for maybe emergency or used in certain instances. So what it does is, it keeps the congestion away from the corner, and it's a safer entrance and exit into the deck. And then number eight was activate the street. So what we have now in this proposal, you'll see, is we have some little pop-up shops along Troy. And the intent is to have it turn and go from a parking lot into an actual street that you would use and hopefully be lively and wonderful. This is a slide that's similar, well, not really similar, but this is a slide that's similar to what we had before, but it changed because of the building massing. Okay, so this right here is leading into the Withington Street development. As I mentioned, we have approximately 725 parking spaces, which is an increase from the initial design. This right here shows the ground floor. This right here shows the ground floor. And what you'll see here is this larger green area that's along Withington. We have a couple of pocket parks that we designed in here to help break this up. And then this right here is the cut-through with a little pocket park that's an entrance off of Withington. And then it actually comes through the alleyway and it ties in with the ground floor entrance into 260. This lower graphic here shows in a shaded bar, the area that we're going to be talking about as we walk up the buildings. So, now look at floors two and three. So, we're going right through this section here. And what we have is the parking deck. We have West End Lofts over here on the west side, and then we have 360 over here on the east. We go up to the next level. This is where we hit the rooftop terrace, so there's no parking at this level. But what happens now is instead of this being a tower like we had originally, it was up here, it stretches across the deck. 260 and 360, but for the footprint here, remains basically the same. But we pulled this back off of Withington. So, this right here, I believe, is a 10 to 12-foot adjustment back. And then we also slid the building back another 10 to 12 feet. So, we gained almost 20 feet away from, or pulled the building back almost 20 feet away from Withington, the residences along Withington. This is up the next level. This is level five. And then the top level, level six. What you can see here is the rooftop terrace below and how we are proposing to bring this back in. This can become wonderful outdoor space for residents as well as just relieving any kind of sight lines or shadow lines. This right here, this is a elevation in the section, which is going along with what we just went over. So, you can see how the building comes up off the street for the West End Lofts, and it goes across the parking deck. And then 260 sits on top of the parking deck. The core elements come down to the ground here and then here. So, that's going to be stairwells, elevators, things of that nature. And then 360 is at the end, it caps it, and that is basically a building that abuts the parking deck. So, this isometric view right here shows West End Lofts, 260, and 360. And then we just have little key elements that show some of the highlights of the building. Between these buildings, you can see some roof terraces, and that would be for the offices to use. This right here is a section that goes through the West End Lofts. And it shows the parking structure, stepping back, actually 18 feet and 18 feet, and then it goes up another three floors. Now, this graphic here is really meant for scale, to give you an idea of the size of this building here in West End Lofts. So, what you can see here is that it's rough, this right here is a two-story house, and this right here represents what's allowed in the ordinance for a single-family home. And what I think is important here is to show that it's maybe only twice as high if that is what a single-story home would be. And this right here is what's allowed in the ordinance for a multifamily residence. We have a sightline graphic down here that shows what portions of the building would likely be mostly visible. We have some heavy green belt and screening that's proposed along Withington. The intent is to soften and buffer and help protect residents from the proposed development. So, what you can see here is that if you were standing on the sidewalk, you'd likely only see four to five feet. It's going to vary, but the intent is to show that we're trying to step the buildings back and screen it with green belt. So, this is a progression down Withington. So, this is going down Withington. This right here is the parking deck, that's 260 up above, and then the neighbors across the north. This is a before and after shot along Withington that shows the parking deck and the view, and then the new proposed development. This right here is probably the best way to describe the Withington portion of the development. This right here is that cut-through that goes across the Nine Mile from Withington. And then we have these pocket parks designed on the west and on the east side. We're proposing some kind of ivy growing up in portions, and other than that, we have deciduous trees. Right now, there's parking all along Withington. This proposal shows little peninsulas, if you will, or cutouts that would provide more greenery. So, it breaks up the street, it still allows for street parking, but also affords us the opportunity to use more street trees to provide even more of a buffer. There's just another view. And then what we did here in this design was, we stepped the facade in and out on the parking deck. We're proposing brick and cast stone materials. There's no exact color or anything. This is a high level where we are right now as far as design goes. We liked the different options here at this middle portion. Personally, I think we liked the masonry look. I think it's a timeless look, and I think it'll look richer and it softens up the facade. This is just a close-up of the little pocket park and then the cut that would go from Withington over to Nine Mile. And then this right here is what we just titled as the Withington pathway. So, you would walk through the deck. And some of the definitions of how this is designed, it's not designed yet. The intent here is just to show you that you'd be able to walk through the deck and then go right out to Nine Mile. And then this is a presentation of the West End Lofts. So, we're proposing more modern design. Again, the exact design is not 100% yet, but it will be brick, glass, and metal. This is the upper portion, it shows us stepping back. On top of the parking structures, it's very important that we use lighter weight materials. So, we're going to propose glass, metal panels, some other cementitious-type paneling. It's just going to work really good with the construction, and especially because we're stepping it back, it's almost a necessity. And then this right here is the alleyway. So, we had a lot of conversation on the alleyway. And where we ended up with it was to leave it as a simple paved alleyway that can be used for vehicles as well as pedestrians. We're showing some different variations in the concrete, which we could do as exposed aggregate, regular concrete. We can mix it up. Staining it probably wouldn't be a very good idea, but I think we should keep it simple and make it durable. We could also do some public art on the walls. So, in here, we have different panels that are solid. This is just grabbed, you know, from wherever, just to show the intent. But we could do some wonderful things here that artists can put up on the walls. This is 260, so this is where you would come through from Withington to go out to Nine Mile. This also acts as the core to get up to 260, which sits up on top of the parking deck. This is just another view that shows the rooftop terrace. And then we're going to talk about the Troy Street development.
Thank you. Good evening. This is our Troy Street proposal. And on a high level, as Jason mentioned, the parking deck contains about 275 spaces with on-grade parking and also two supported levels above that. We do have some leasable space along Allen Road, that's roughly 5,500 to 6,000 square feet. We also have some pop-up retail, incubatory-type retail along Troy Street. We do have some flex-function meeting space on the second level two along Allen Road. And then we do have our 160, that's the office component of this building. And that's two floor plates of roughly 30,000 square feet apiece, about 60,000 square feet This is the ground-level plan of the Troy development. So, as you can see, West, I'm sorry, Troy Street is to the north, and we have Allen Road to the west. The blue area, that is the leasable office space, so that's at grade level, that's a leasable space. We do have, this is the entry to the business tower right over in this direction, so that gets you up to the second through fifth floors. As was mentioned earlier, we did relocate the parking entry from this space, from this location here, over to the east to get that away from the corner. One of the big changes in this project is the pop-up retail, and that's along West Troy Street right here. So, the advantage there is we get the, we help to activate the streetscape on that side. So, it just brings, it really helps to engage that street side. We do have the parking behind that, which ramps up to the second and third levels. Then we have the existing alleyway behind us to the bottom of the sheet. The second floor plan is on top and the third is on the bottom of the sheet. And again, that shows that flexible meeting-type space over here along Allen Road, and this is just the bulk of the parking space, parking spaces, second and third. And that's really, that office space is really, I'm sorry, this flex space is really almost two levels, so it can really support an auditorium-style seating in that area too. And this is the fourth and fifth floor of the development, and this is the open office space. So, that goes up, that's roughly 30,000 square feet, like I mentioned earlier, about 60,000 square feet. These are the exterior elevations, and those colors just reflect the uses. So, the blue color is where the office, and the white is the parking, which you can see right along here, the two levels, I'm sorry, three levels of parking. Along Troy, this is the pop-up retail right along here too. That's the business entry. This is the view from the alley side. You can see the parking, parking component with the goal to help screen that and shield the lights. We do have some wire mesh we're proposing in the openings. This building is roughly 70 feet tall too, at the high point. This is that isometric view, again, just showing that, again, the similar color just shows the use, so the blue is the retail, I'm sorry, the office, and the white is the parking along Troy Street. Similar sections as the Withington building. This is a cut-through the short distance, so looking to the west. You can see the parking through the third level, then the office space above. And we also, when we abutted the residential directly to the south here, we did step the building back 10 feet, just to help create a bit of a buffer, to help soften that distance. And this shows the 125-deep lot directly to the south of us, which is a residential lot. So, that's showing an approximate house, which could be built in the lot, showing the 35-foot setback, and then showing, and this is the street right here, Saratoga, showing that it does help to, I guess, screen some of the views to the development. And also it shows the open space around it too, the alleyways right here. This is Troy Street. And this is a section through the long direction, showing the parking, showing the office levels. And then again, the same concept, as we front Allen Road, we stepped the office component back right here, another 10 feet. Those aren't usable balconies. The intent is just to create some distance from the office use to the residential. So, those are not outdoor public spaces. This also shows the higher ceiling in that conference room space. These are just views of the exterior. This is a view to the south along Allen Road at the corner of Allen and Troy, suggesting the materials of brick, limestone, consistent with materials in the downtown but done in more of a contemporary way, clean lines. And as Jason mentioned, the other development, same thing here too. We would build lighter materials up above and take advantage of the structure below. So, these are all metal and glass components. This is a view along Troy Street to the east. This shows the pop-up retail, could be overhead doors or just to help really engage that street. And this, we'd also propose to increase the green space along here. Maybe that's an area for outdoor dining or open seating right here, but it helps to, just helps to get some green space along Troy. Just a close-up view, showing some seating out here. The intent was to screen the parking. We don't have the design totally figured out yet, but that's just the goal, is to help screen the parking, shield the headlights. This is a view to the west along Troy Street. There's also talk, this building is on zero lot line, meaning we can't place windows up above here. So, this is an opportunity for public art. And again, it's just a suggestion. It's an open canvas. And then a view towards Nine Mile from Allen Road. You see the building stepped back, and same thing along here too. And then we just have a series of views along Nine Mile and also some aerial head views overhead.
This is just really a progression down Nine Mile, looking at basically what you would see at about eye level as you go down, looking to the north. And then we also have some views looking to the south. So, you see right there, to your right, that's 360 and 260. Go ahead.
Are you talking to the microphone?
Sorry. So, as you come down Nine Mile, what you see, this, let me back up real quick here. This is a study, more or less, and I thought it was pretty telling, and I thought it was really worth showing you guys. So, as you come down Nine Mile, there's 360, and then there's 260. As we go down the road, we're just above eye level probably. What we thought was important is that these buildings aren't imposing from Nine Mile. They kind of, they fit right in with the streetscape. We actually built all of this, so we measured most of the buildings, it's pretty accurate. And then when you go down Nine Mile, then here, here you are at the corner where you can get a glimpse of the West End Lofts. You can see the other residential development right there. Looking back, and then this right here would be what you would see of the Troy Street development. Again, the Troy Street development. These are just some aerial shots of the development. I get that it's in Kansas and everything, but we couldn't model everything. So, this was enough for us. Called uncle after that. So, this just shows downtown Ferndale through here, that's Troy, and that's Withington. These are just really, I guess, informative, just gives you an idea of the scale here. These kind of fit in. To me, they almost kind of hug, anchor the downtown. That's the existing residential development there. That's all we have.
All right. Excellent. Okay, Jake, you said you wanted to wrap it up before I start opening it up for questions?
Yeah, sure. So, thank you. I'm sure as everyone can tell, there's been a significant amount of effort that's gone into the modifications. One thing I did want to point out for the council is that one of the biggest trade-offs that we still haven't finalized yet is around, like, the overall massing. So, one of the concerns and questions come up is, is there grade level green space, grade level parking? Well, you know, obviously, there's a certain amount of parking that's required for the city based on what the city's needs. And we've been consistent with that from the start of this project. Well, if you have more parking and you want to keep the height lower, then you have to, you know, make it go wide across that space. Certainly, if you go up, then you can break it up and go accordingly. So, this is our recommendation. However, it's not final, but that is a natural trade-off. I think it's important for the council to understand that, you know, it's got to go one way or the other. I mean, you can't fit, you can't just, you know, make the cars disappear. So, we do have a little bit of a presentation from Dennis Griffin to talk about where we're at from our program, more on the process side. I will say that, you know, we are going really quickly. I know it seems like it's kind of long, almost a year now, but where we're at now and the amount of work and effort that's gone into it, it's pretty advanced, you know, from where we're at. And I'd like Dennis to come up and just kind of give us a council good overview about the work that's gone into this, because we have heard that, you know, there's some concern about what we were doing behind the scenes, how things are going, and it's important that, you know, we present the facts to the council so they can understand the business that's been going on behind the scenes.
Great.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. I put a couple of thoughts in here, and I just put lessons from listening, shared vision and collaboration. And that's the overriding theme. But I'll step back for a few months ago, about a year ago, when I was asked to incorporate a program into downtown Royal Oak that would attract, it would attract tenants, it would attract attention, which I think we've done pretty well in that part of it. It would attract dollars, it would attract jobs. It also would be attractive for professionals and residents and everyone else to embrace and move forward. So, the original design and program was broad-based without a lot of stakeholder feedback. It really was a meeting in the Economic Development Office, saying, what do you have here? Let's investigate and see what we come up with. And we've spent a tremendous amount of time and listened and learned. We learned very much from the benefit of stakeholders, residents, and third-party consultants. Sometimes we think that the payments we make to them is, you know, frivolous, but ultimately they have lessons that we all can learn from. So, the overall modified program, I think these are important points. Parking counts are now tied to current and future demand from the experts. The building height and the massing was greatly reduced. We feel it's more appropriate. The public infrastructure was expanded and enhanced. That's the Withington areas, the pass-throughs, activating the street. The word "pop-up retail" come up, and "pop-up retail" is meant for people that don't have a long-term lease. You can have a tenant come in and use it for, you know, two weeks or during a seasonal time period.
time period. That pop-up retail would be run, administered by the DDA, and let them, with their experience, decide which tenants to attract and use that space for. The design material studies have been advanced, not perfected yet, but clearly advanced, where, you know, stately in certain areas, fun and light in other areas. And then, from a structural and construction standpoint, that was advanced, and your parking consultant is really second to none, Carl Walker, does this type of project across the country, by sharing infrastructure and using public-private, using the foundations and using vertical infrastructure and putting buildings on top or incorporated it. That's part of the theme we have here. We've learned that staging is necessary. It's, we have a large attraction project, but to go all at once is, is just too much. It's, so staging is a very, very necessary item to advance. Parking mitigation is necessary. I say "necessary" because it is, it's defined now. Are there going to be some congestion items? Absolutely. But it also can be some of the things that make a place exciting. You go to other cities and you see construction, you're like, what, what's going on there? It's something that actually adds to the vibrance of a community if done appropriately. Parking mitigation. Minimizing disruptions is necessary. Again, it's necessary, but disruptions are necessary as well through the process. You can't do it without them. So minimizing and being smart about it is vital. Some of the things that we learned, the market demand for office and residential space has been validated. We hear it throughout the presentations and in the community and from brokers. Tech jobs, tech jobs, tech jobs, they want Ferndale. Ferndale wants them, the businesses want them. They want the right ones, they don't want behemoths that swallow it up. You want those that can grow, and also those that can contract. Contracting in space is very important, and that's why the program we put together allows companies to grow. When they get too big, send them off to the suburbs. But if they're here, and later in their career, or whatever, in a downturn, they can trade on spaces and stay. That's the thoughtfulness in the program of the office buildings. The market demand for additional parking and public infrastructure has been validated. Parking, it's, can we move forward without it? Yes, we can go forward, we won't grow or enhance. I've been back over and over the, some of the charges in the master plan, and I put some stars, I'm not going to read them, they're obvious, to do things in a smart and thoughtful way. And we learned so many lessons from listening. I hear the proprietors come here and said they're doing really well, and that's great. I would, I would guess that some of the reasons they were attracted here was maybe additional parking or additional space, or an economic chance to get their business started. The next generation needs that chance, and it's our job to give them spaces and be smart about it. So where we are from a program and a design, we can get into the minute details, but if we can agree that this is at hand and can be advanced, and you let the team go out and work on that attraction initiative for the tenants, then we have something we can take the next stage. So really, there are a couple of points that we would like to proceed, and that's negotiate and agree on business terms. And again, nothing is done until the next stage, which is, the systems are very technically and proficient. Public-private partnerships happen in cities all across the globe. The next stage after we agree on business terms, how to proceed, and what's the next stage of investment, you in taking the property off the market, and us spending our next stage of real money for consultants, is bring the plan back to Planning Commission. You have a very talented planning commission. You know, I've been in front of a lot of bodies, and the municipal bodies, and this one is exceptional, they're thoughtful, they, they challenge a developer to think bigger, which never happens. It doesn't mean it's the right answer after you go through the whole process, but they at least challenge that, and that doesn't happen in every municipality. And within that, we would come through a PUD and development agreement. In an agreement, a PUD development, it would have all of those things that are important to everyone, scale, size, mitigation, parking, timing. And then we would come back through that to provide an update to council. Ultimately, in a PUD and this type of development, the final say comes from this group. And then during that timeframe, I don't know where it would be inserted, we'd like to be able to start marketing the property appropriately to tenants. And you hear someone like Brendan, or you hear Irene or others, we want to let everyone know that Ferndale's open for business. And open for business can mean a lot of things. It can mean open for business the way that people are now, and we remain this size. It's not necessarily a bad thing. Maybe the best thing is that we're open for business to be a little bit bigger. In the whole scale of things, 180,000 square feet is not monumental. It's sizable, it's spread around in a thoughtful way to, you know, just continue the growth in operations and opportunity for next generation. Hopefully, that was quickly said, and I'll move on with that.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Through the chair, if I may, there are a couple of things, actually, to your comments. One, you mentioned downtown Royal Oak versus downtown Ferndale. I think they're distinctively different, and I think there needs to be a recognition of that. And I think actually, you know, that as we grow in downtown Ferndale, we need to, you know, be cognizant of the fact of what's, what's supportive and recognizable for the neighborhoods, and I think this is a discussion that Royal Oak didn't have. And by having us compared to Royal Oak, as you, in your comments you mentioned, I think that's a misnomer. So I think that's a careful pace for us not to go down.
Yeah, and I may have said that, and I'm sure I did. I think of, I think regionally, in terms of development and placement of product and businesses, we're actively working on some other items in the master plan in the old industrial areas, and I apologize for that. And the distinct changes that you'll see in our approach and listening, I think, is very germane to Ferndale. I apologize, and I 100% agree.
No, no, I'm with you.
I'd like to throw one additional comment on that, is that from a, from a jobs perspective, and from tech companies looking for space, we're all in this together, it's one Detroit, okay? The design, the fit, that's very Ferndalian, at least that's our mission and plan. So I just want to make sure that we're clear from the development team, that we look at this as a region, as a state, and it's a different lens, clearly, when you're doing the design, the building materials.
Yeah, great, thank you.
So I would just like to provide some quick closing remarks before we open it up to questions. First, that we significantly made changes to the design aesthetics based on feedback. We are not complete with that yet, but we are significantly further along. The next step is negotiating business terms. I mean, I can't say that enough, we have to be able to take this out to market and be able to go and advance. We've gone as far as we can without a formal agreement in place. I'm really proud of the process that went through the city. Whether this happens or doesn't happen, I believe that the city and our development team have done what we said we were going to do. And I realize that, you know, we're just not going to win over some of the naysayers from the opposition to this. We're here to provide facts and to provide opinions, and I believe we've done that. And I'm very proud, regardless of how this goes, of the process we went through and the hard work from this council and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. All right, so that took about an hour, and I know you're all looking at the clock like, wow, how do we get everything in in a half hour? If we need to extend this and push the regular council meeting back, we may, but why don't we open it up for questions now? Questions and comments, we're going to keep them to three minutes, and you don't have to take the whole three minutes if you don't need all three. But why don't we get started? If it's a comment, don't expect that folks will react, but if it's a, if it's a specific factual question that we can address tonight, we'll do that. And again, I want to reemphasize, Derek, I'm looking at you, but if folks want to submit questions or comments, they can, on the Ferndalemoves.org website or our city website as well, right? Yeah, oh, and I'm sorry, I should say, I didn't give council an opportunity. Are there any?
I'd rather listen to what the citizens would have to say, they don't want to listen to me, they want to, they want to answer.
All right, so if you'd like to, if you'd like to come up, give us your name.
To clarify, the mayor, we don't want to necessarily, we may not have the answers to all questions.
Absolutely, right, and so, absolutely.
We may want to just collect them to comment later.
People can talk to their council people, too.
Yes, so, Sherry.
Sherry Wells, second house from Allen, that's Troy. When people moved their, built homes around the downtown Ferndale back in the 20s and 30s, it was because they had a downtown they could walk to, they could go to for everyday needs. They didn't have as many cars and vehicles, and buses didn't go very far, very fast. And downtown was an attraction for that reason. For most of the 27 years I've lived here, it's been an attraction for me for that, too. Not for the last few years, obviously. There's not that much for residents to go downtown for. The lofts on Nine have been, were built to be bought, and instead, they were leased. I know of a next-gen person who rent leased a loft on Nine, and works down at Wayne State University, and couldn't wait until his lease was up. I saw him in Midtown Detroit a couple times, so he does like to have a more active life, but he didn't find it here. One of the parallels had been made, the credit union won, which is on the edge of the downtown business district, and didn't even want to be included in it. So to use that as a parallel, while we're only going to have a building that high, I do appreciate that they've lowered the heights of it. The pictures still make it look like a fortress, not a hub, but a fort, and all of the little peasants' homes are outside that fort, because I did study all those on the website. I'm curious about what's going to happen with the south of Troy lot alley. That didn't say too much about whether people are going to be able to come and go from their garages there. Residential-only parking is the only thing that's going to work once these parking decks are put in. Everyone else who lives in Ferndale gets parking on their own street, and just because we live near here downtown, doesn't mean we should be penalized. The modern design, brick, glass, and metal, one of the things that I thought was an attraction was the Ferndale character, and the Ferndale character is not glass and metal. In Europe, in Montreal and Quebec, people are able to build things that fit in with the character of those towns. Even a McDonald's can look really classy in Europe, but they're required to fit in.
And just about 30 seconds left, Sharon.
Okay, down to the end. The vibrance, the word vibrant relates to vibration. The final one is Allen Street stores. We've repeatedly, those of us on West Troy do not want anything opened onto Allen Street, because people will park on our street, not in this beloved parking deck that we're building to take care of that, and they're going to run in there, run out, and we have repeatedly said we did not want that.
Again, through the chair, if I may, the lofts on Nine, Sherry, are they directly attributed to your noise concerns?
No, just the fact that...
You brought them up, so I want to make sure if they're directly attributed to your noise concerns or not.
Lofts on Nine are over here, I'm over there.
No, I got it, but you brought it up, so I want to make sure. Well, let's, all right. Okay, thank you. This isn't going to be a back-and-forth, but this is your opportunity to speak, and you are up next, ma'am.
Thank you, Joan Shield, 342 Withington. First off, I want to thank the people on their visual things, to have the visual on the apartment on Withington, it looked like it was from my garage. It had the picture of it looked like my garage. My house wasn't there, but my garage was there.
Your glasses were cut, what was up with that?
Anyway, I am also concerned, how come we haven't got more advertising about this meeting? The only reason I knew about the meeting, because I ran into somebody and they said something about it. We do have that bulletin board on Nine Mile and Woodward, but you can see there's not that many people here. It's sort of accused, I, the people, the developers, the people that decide what to do, never seem to live in the area where they want to put these things. And that'd concern the people who have, do live in the area. And they were saying about the people that want to come here. Well, we like to have people come here, but we also have to concern the people that are already here. I don't think you've really taken a poll about, from the people. As I said, last fall, I had a garage sale, yard sale during the funky Ferndale Art Fair, and from 90 people, of the 90 people that probably came through, only two, one said they were for the project, one said they had to look into it. Everybody else said, ah! That was sort of part of the words. My concerns are, as I stated before, the utilities. You're bringing in these new apartments, these new businesses, what about our utility system that we have, the sewer system, the water system, the electrical system? I know what, a few years ago, our electrical system blew up for four days, we had to have it replaced. It was about, what, maybe eight, nine years ago? I'm also concerned about the security during the building stages, the security of the homes that are near the construction. And I'm just wondering why people didn't come to those of us who live right across from or next to these developments and talk to us about it. I think this is where the things come, to talk about. Yeah, six stories is better than the 12 stories, but it still is, I want to see the sunlight come up, or go past during the day, and what have you. And I don't know whether apartment buildings are going to bring more people to the district for shopping during the day. They're going to live there, but where are they going to work? They're going to go away. And you have...
And we're almost to three minutes, just...
Okay. All of the developments they're building down, where the new Aki Street, there's all of this sort of building. So this is the main concerns that I have.
Thank you.
And I've stayed about the utilities and the security.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. This is my very first meeting, because I only recently became a homeowner here in Ferndale.
Welcome.
Thank you. And my name's Tina Glossopnow. I actually live at 425 West Saratoga, which would be about a half a block from the Troy development. My concern is that when my husband and I moved back from Los Angeles five years ago, and we're living in an apartment in Royal Oak, we said, where do we want to live out the rest of our lives, hopefully, or maybe the next 10, 15 years? And we said, well, we don't really like Royal Oak that much, it's just kind of busy, and so we said, where's another community that's close by that is very progressive and livable? And that's when we chose Ferndale. We thought that it was a wonderful community, it felt very suburban, yet we were able to walk to the restaurants just down the street from us. And my concern is, building these large residential flex buildings is going to ruin that feeling that we moved to Ferndale for, that wonderful walkability, but also that lovely suburban, quiet, Main Street feel. That's my concern.
Thank you, and welcome to town. Good evening.
Hi. Michelle from Painting with a Twist. Sorry, I couldn't really see the visuals, because they were just small and sitting in the back. I wish that they were maybe handouts for the folks in the room.
I will say they are available on the Ferndale Moves website, so please avail yourself of that. And if you need hard copies, you know, call Joe at City Hall, and we'll get you some, okay?
Okay. So let me start by tech town, the tech movement, the jobs, I get it, okay? But what are we doing to bring this to Ferndale? We're making a proposal, and we're shutting down parking lots that are to almost their full capacity during peak business hours, without any thought on bringing alternatives to where can we park while this construction is going on. We say, we're hearing that this is minor details, no, this is major to the city of downtown and its businesses and its neighborhoods. So think about, what does this do? This changes the vibe of the Ferndale business, you know? To shut down the parking for a month, what does that do? You're hampering businesses to shut it down for six months, you're looking at businesses starting to leave, to shut it down for a year, businesses are gone. So let's look at other proposals to bring them here. Can we look at other locations that are viable? Can we look at the save-a-lot lot? Can we look at other things so that we can still bring them here, but not ruin the vibe of Ferndale, and what everybody comes here for, and what everybody's attracted to Ferndale?
Thanks, thanks, Michelle. Okay, yeah, come on. Martha, you'll just have to creep up there, I know you're, yeah, no, go ahead, you're good.
Hi. My name is Liba Marchioni, I'm the owner of Shine on Yoga. What is the plan to help save the businesses that are... What is the plan to help save the businesses that are there now, like mine? I put my heart and soul, my life savings into a business that now potentially truly will be shut down. I can't sustain two years without parking. And so this is such a beautiful proposal, and I do appreciate seriously the efforts that you put in. And that it is revised, it looks good.
You've got to speak into the mic.
However, you know, to bring in an unknown at the expense of shutting down the known, the people that are there right now, I can't imagine unless you're a big restaurant that you could survive. We won't survive. My lease is up in June. I'll be there two years. I might not resign if this goes through. I wonder if you could talk about the plan to save the businesses. Are you going to build both structures at the same time? Is parking going to be shut down for 24 months or more? Where are my patrons going to park?
It's a good question, and let me just say, and maybe Derek, you can help me with this, but part of the presentation tonight was to update the community and council on the concept. Parking mitigation plans, construction schedules are still part of what is being actively, vigorously studied. And Derek, do you want to speak to that?
I do, I do. But I do want to mention that I think the one commitment that's come out of it, and maybe it went unnoticed as part of the initial conversation or presentation, is we heard, I think everybody was heard loud and clear a year ago, we had just started this relationship and just started discussion, and there was a lot of things that were potentially on the table. I think the development team and we as staff are committed to the fact that the parking's not going to be shut down all at one time, that this would have to be phased in at some level, shape, and form to assist with just that. Obviously, we would pursue every other avenue for parking mitigation and are actively doing so, and will do so very openly if this goes forward and if we progress to a above-ground development review and approval process. But the first and the biggest thing I think everybody wanted to hear out of this is there is a commitment to phase this in and not, and not do that to the parking in the downtown for a significant period of time.
Thank you, Derek. I couldn't agree with you more. And let's be clear, parking will not be shut down in both lots at the same time. I'm kind of a little bit tired of this discussion, and we're past it.
I would agree. That's, I think everybody's committed to that point. We've heard it loud and clear, along with a lot of other mitigating factors, leasing of parking lots, providing other parking spaces. We don't have that all right now because obviously we don't have a construction timetable. We're not even really close to that at this point. But as it moves forward, in addition to that phasing, we would be providing other alternatives and mitigation processes.
I couldn't agree with you more. I just want to make sure we're perfectly clear about that.
Thank you.
And if I may through the chair.
Yes.
We are not making a decision tonight. This is simply an update.
That's right.
We are not required to make any decision about whether or not this project is going forward.
But there are certain decisions we've already made, which, one of which is that we're not going to shut down both parking lots.
Exactly, yes.
Fair enough. All right.
But we don't know that, that things won't be done without our knowing about it. So it's very important for those of us who are very leery to bring everything up as much as we can now. For instance...
Please.
No environmental impact study, no environmental impact study, and no environmental impact study. That's wrong. No one knows whether people who live here, if that even affects it, want some big tech thing going on here? And what is the history of tech moving into small towns? We certainly know what it is in San Francisco, a city already destroyed by the amount that it costs to live there. Is that going to happen here? If people make a lot of money, is that going to push anybody else without a lot of money out? There needs to be more statistics from people who live here now about what they want to see. Do they want to see a city with a lot of apartments? Do the people who live around here want the exhaust from the cars? And as far as comparing to Royal Oak, Royal Oak is absolutely different. People don't live in proximity to the degree that they live in proximity to the downtown here. It's totally different. And referring to construction as exciting and disruptions necessary, who are you kidding? You don't want it next to where you live, and we don't like it next to where our businesses are. The Troy Street pictures, I think they were quite deceptive. The streets look so much bigger than they're remotely going to be. They aren't that big now, and they're not as big as they are referred to on the pictures there. I've been here over 30 years. I want this to be a city of human beings. And my understanding from the people who come into my store is that that is an aspect that they like, that it isn't flying at some incredibly fast pace. So people who want more, who are those people? And what does the more mean? Is it money for them? Do the people who live here want more and more and more? Shouldn't everybody ask themselves when they wake up in the morning, how much is enough and how much is too much?
Good evening.
Mayor Coulter, you taught me to never ask a question I don't already know the answer to.
Shh!
However, I don't know the answer to this question, but it's something I've been meaning to ask. As it sits, take the Withington lot alone, we don't collect property taxes on it. We get parking revenue?
Yes.
But that's it.
Correct.
Would we collect taxes on this?
Oh, yeah.
Would it be more than the parking revenue we're getting now?
Absolutely. And Derek, I'll let you address that, and we don't have all the figures, but absolutely the tax revenue is an important component of this project.
Yeah, in twofold, because we would still collect parking revenue from the system, from the deck itself, so...
Hypercode here.
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you. Twofold, the answer is yes and yes. We would still collect parking revenue from the deck, from the system, and then users who are there from the day, and then the above-ground development itself would ask add a tax generating component to the development. We've asked Oakland County to estimate conservatively, just on the Withington lot, what that generates. And for all tax and jurisdictions, that's about $800,000 a year in taxes above the parking revenue.
Above the parking.
Yeah. I think that equates to about $400,000 for the general fund.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I didn't know the answer to that. And I want to thank this whole team. I think this, I think this is new, and I do think it's exciting. I think it'll be inconvenient, and it'll probably be a royal pain while it's going on, but isn't everything, everything that's worth getting is worth the pain. So thank you to all you people for doing all this work, and please stick with Ferndale.
Rafino, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Rafino Valentine, resident and business owner. I'm in favor of this plan. I think a lot of people are bringing more jobs to the downtown area. You know, instead of just the service, a lot of service and retail jobs, we need somebody to actually go to those businesses during the day too. So I like the jobs part of it. I like the design part of it. And I also like the, the idea of starting a tech hub here. I think that keeps the city relevant and competitive, looking towards the future. I mean, nothing would be better than to get some of those companies that Dan Gilbert is wooing downtown and get them to Ferndale. So I'm in favor. Thanks.
Thank you. Come on, give us your name, and three minutes is yours.
Hello, my name's Garboiagin.
Yeah.
And I live on 376 West Saratoga. So, yeah, I appreciate the extra effort they put here. I think the last time we had any information was at the Rust Belt Market.
Yeah.
So I appreciated the slides they had, but living on West Saratoga, I'm closer to the Troy development, and just looking at that, comparing it to the Withington, I don't know, slide 33, if you guys remember, that was one of the angles, and it showed like someone standing and looking up. And I don't know if there's a magic number with what that angle is, the low point or high point, or what they try to strive for. But when I compared it to the slide 70, which was the one looking at, from West Saratoga to the, the building there, in the Troy parking lot, that was from the middle of the street. That was on the other side of the house. And it showed those lines where would be my house there, blocking the view, so someone on the street would not have to see the building. But it's not very equal to the one on Withington where they're showing it from the closest part of their, their residential lot line. If you, if you had that slide up, you would see it. I mean, from my backyard, to see that building, I'd be like, looking up like that, it's like 80-degree, you know, angle there. So it's, it's kind of, I don't know why they were comparing that to that, why they had some guy standing in the middle of West Saratoga looking at it versus somebody looking from the closest part of the lot line. And, you know, well, all the rest of the slides kind of showed everything from a distance, and it didn't really show that alley correctly. It just showed a bunch of trees and completely fenced off. In reality, it's not like that. You got, it's, you got openings where people have their garages. I have a garage there. I have a driveway coming out. So it's a lot narrower than what that shows. And, you know, from far away, it looks nice, but for me, it's just 18 feet away because there's no, like in Withington, where it's built across the street from residents. You have all these open spaces and green spaces, and they're built back from the front line. And for West Saratoga, it's built right up to the alley lane. So it's just 18 feet away.
The first part of your question was very specific about why it was the angle started in the beginning, in the middle of the street, et cetera, et cetera. What I would encourage you to do, sir, if you, if you want, is to just give Derek your name and email or number, and, and they can at least help specifically address those questions about how that was calculated on the slide, if you're open to that. I would encourage you to give Derek your contact information.
Sure.
Okay.
And the other thing was about...
You have your three minutes though, so if you can do it briefly.
Real quick, yeah, the parking lot, it showed that it was open to all the parking cars looking into the backyards. And I heard something about a shade to block out the light, but what about the noise? What about actual people looking down into the backyards from the parking lots?
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Hello. Hi, my name's Mike Steidman. I didn't come here to talk tonight, but so many people are kind of poo-pooing on this project that I actually wanted to stand up and give a few positives. I'm a 10-year resident of Ferndale. I live in two houses over, towards the Hazel Park side. I actually just sold one house, and I'm now moving, I'm going to be actually your neighbor right on West Troy Street, so just down the road.
It's a fun street.
Yeah, I'd heard about this project for a long time, and I have to say, the other night, I read about it, and I went through this whole, like, whatever it was, 80 pages, and I was up way into the wee hours of the night. And I told my wife about it the next day. We both work for startups. I work in programmatic ad industry recently for AOL Platforms, before that for Data Zoo. She works for a company called Five Stars, which is a, like a loyalty program. And we actually said, that would be awesome if we could just walk to work at the end of our street. And, and, because that's, those are the types of offices that our companies tend to inhabit, like four or five people offices. Someone made a comment about the Lofts on Nine. For those of you that don't remember, it was like a pretty broke-down gas station car repair shop, and I had my beat-up Chevy Prism repaired there. I would say it's a significant improvement. I love Go Comedy. My, my wife likes that massage place. I don't remember the name, but she uses it all the time. Yeah, maybe they did end up running, renting a lot out, but I think maybe that was a pricing issue. I don't know that Ferndale was ready to take 300, $400,000, $1,000 to $2,000 square foot lots. So maybe that could be a concern with this. But I will say, this project doesn't really change walkability for me. In fact, if anything, it makes it more walkable. I mean, no one's, if you're cutting through the parking lot, you're probably cutting through the ways that are already still going to be open to you. And if anything, it brings in more businesses, which pushes down Nine Mile, pushes upwardward, pushes downwardward, and now people that were more than a half mile away, now they're within walkability of restaurants and bars or whatever they want to go to. So I think it actually increases that. I do love the idea of maybe having a hardship fund for businesses because there were some very valid concerns. I think that there, that could be a rough two years. I don't think this would push people out. I don't think it's going to completely turn us into San Francisco. Worst-case scenario, you just won the house lottery because your property went up so high that you can't live here anymore. You just took a huge cash out, I guess. But, you know, when people talk about Ferndale and they say it's up and coming, I heard a lot of people today say that they came here to basically ride out the rest of their days. And I came here to work and play and live and enjoy it. So I just would like to ask that maybe just take a step back and think about all the positives that could come from it, because I feel like there's just so much focus on the negative. And yes, there are negatives. But I would just say, just maybe reevaluate and come up with three positive things in your views of all the negative things. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Hello, Brian Pressed at 305 West Troy. You actually be my neighbor. And you probably didn't have to preface your statement with poo-pooing. Probably could have made it, and we would have understood what you're saying without getting to that, but I feel like you had to make that point. I reviewed the thing online, and the terraces for the Rust Troy, was that in the back pointing towards the alleyway or the front towards Troy? You know, at the back? Yeah. You know, when we had the meeting at Rust Belt, you know, it was just a very reasonable request, and that was to not have terraces pointing towards people's backyards. I mean...
And direct your comments to her if you don't mind.
Well, I'm going to do both ways. I mean, just a reasonable request, and now people can look into our backyards. And, I mean, if we're going to build this, let's at least listen. I mean, that demonstrates to me that individuals are not listening to us so we can continue our poo-pooing because nobody's listening to us. And the thing with, I know you're sick and tired of people talking about the parking, when the development has progressed like they have for this, yet the development for how to mitigate impact has not progressed, at least we don't see it then, we start to think you guys haven't thought about it. Now, if you've thought about that, communicate to us. Because if you don't, then what you're saying is, trust us, we'll make the decision sometime. So I know you're sick and tired of it, but we're sick and tired of not hearing anything about it. So it goes both ways. Thank you.
And I would like to clarify something, and that's, the presentation specifically said that the West Troy building would not have terraces in the south-facing part of the building, that it was simply a step back so that the homes didn't feel like the building was six stories right on top of them. So there was a 10-foot, I believe, was a 10-foot space from the lower parking deck to the beginning of the office buildings.
Yeah.
There was no public access.
And maybe I'd be real quick, clear. I know there's been a couple of specific factual questions, and I'll answer them real quick. Yes, that was a misspeak. By terrace, they mean step back. There'll be no public space or balconies on the back of the south side of the Troy building.
There's no terrace.
So, well, terrace, by terrace, they mean step back. It has multiple meanings. The alley behind the south building, South of Troy, will stay in all access that is there now, will continue to be there, that cannot and will not go away.
How wide is that alley, do you know?
I think it's 18 to 20 feet right now.
Okay.
It will not get narrower. If anything, it'll get wider. It'll get improved, and it'll get improved to current standards. So I think that was a couple of factual things.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. John Murray, resident and also owner of Modern Natural Baby. One thing I want to say is, when you look at Modern Natural Baby, we have grown in the last five years, and we have found that Ferndale is an incredible place to have your business, right? Incredible. When people say things are going downhill, we don't understand that, right? We don't know what, what people are talking about. We like the way it is. Now, the thing is, I want to see Ferndale be better. I want to see it be greater. Some of these things look amazing. But one thing I really have a problem with is communication. So there's not a lot of experience here, right? So what I have to do is I have to look at, I have to look at what they've told us, and I have to come to a realization, are these the people you were trusting, right? So all I've seen is a slide, and along the ways that they told us, we, we would be informed about everything. I had a, I had a meeting with Jake, and Jake basically told me, you know, it's better for you to have open parking. And I'm like, really? We are a top retailer, open parking would be better than closed parking. And then during the meeting, what I realized is that there's going to be retail instead of parking behind me. So, one of the things I realized is, I'm one of the top retailers in the area, but they have no idea where I'm located at, and that they're actually going to be putting businesses behind me instead of having parking there. So, it's one of the things that I'm very frustrated with, just for the fact that I am supposed to, I'm supposed to trust them, and all of a sudden, they've come up with different ideas on what's going to happen, so.
Just to clarify, though, the plan doesn't have retail behind your store.
It does.
Retail.
Yeah, it's a retail shop, retail space.
Retail office, so basically, basically they take all of our parking...
Office, now, oh, okay, okay, not first-level shops, that's, I guess, I'm sorry, that's what I thought you meant, by retail, offices, yeah.
Right, so what they do is, take a retail who does lots of business during the day, and what they do is, they put offices in our parking spots. So, it's one of those things that has more to do with, I don't think they're actually looking at who we are, and what we represent, and all they're doing is, is they're looking at this and say, wouldn't it be nice to have a little building here, or a little building there? So, I think just the scheme of things, I've been sour just for the fact that I know what they're doing, they're just, they've got a plan that fits what they want, instead of a plan that fits what's best for Ferndale. So, it's just one of my many concerns with it. Of course, again, we've done very well in the last five years. You do this, I know, we might, we go to survival mode, we might go out of business. So, we're one of the top retailers, and I know that we'd go out of business, so you're trying to keep retail. So, what you're doing is, you're basically saying, I have been with you for five years, but these businesses are more important, that we don't even know if they're going to be successful or not. But what we do know is, if you close my parking lot down for a year, we don't exist. And if we don't exist, there's no other retail on our street that's going to exist either. So, what you're going to do is, you're going to completely change, and the thing is, I don't see anything wrong, I say little steps, take one step at a time, right? Give them one project and say, hey, can you do this? And if they're successful, give them another one. But instead, it's almost like we need to, we need to change everything, like Ferndale's not good enough. You make big...
And you're close to three minutes.
Okay, but you make big changes like this when you're not successful, and I think Ferndale is successful, and we're on a good road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. I'll be quick, I know we're close. I just want to say that I have a career, because tech jobs exist, so I'm in support of seeing tech jobs come to Ferndale. I believe it's...
Give us your name, by the way.
Oh, Lisa Kincaid, I'm at 323 West Troy.
Thanks, Lisa.
I believe it's an excellent place to be an entrepreneur, and I think it's great that Mr. Siegel would like to bring a second one of his businesses to our community. And I also believe that change is an important part of what's needed for growth. That said, I live three houses down from one of the proposed 360 sites, and there's no amount of convincing that's going to make me feel okay about living in the shadow of what is essentially going to be a giant parking garage. We bought our home here specifically because it wasn't like any other house we'd seen, and Ferndale wasn't like any other community we'd visited. I think, when you're listening to people tonight, it's super important to remember that most of us are not against growth, or change, or success. We're against a plan that seems counter to what Ferndale is about. And change, to me, doesn't mean forgetting everything that's old and replacing it with everything new, it means getting creative and working with members of our community and local businesses. I want to see Ferndale succeed, I support the growth of business, particularly for entrepreneurs, but this isn't Royal Oak, or Birmingham, or Detroit, and I don't feel like we need to build six stories up, or 10 stories up. It's not a sprawling metropolis, it's Ferndale, and many of us live here because it's not like the surrounding suburbs, or the cities. I wasn't looking for a small podunk town when I moved here. I love the restaurants and bars around here, we go to them frequently, we walk to them, it's awesome. But I also didn't want to live in downtown Detroit, or downtown San Francisco. What I find to be the most difficult part of the whole process is that we've been told from the beginning that this isn't a done deal, and we want your input, but the process, from my point of view, just hasn't felt very objective. Obviously, if council wants to move ahead with the project, you're entitled to your opinions, but I feel like there's some mixed messages being sent to the community. On one hand, we're being told, no decisions have been made, and nothing's final, and then, a few months later, I'm reading an interview with a council person that's entitled, yes, on 360. And the whole thing feels a bit like it's already been rubber stamped. And I would just like the council to consider that the entire community really needs to be involved in this process. We're a really active community, we're a really concerned community, we would love to have input, we would love to see tech jobs come to Ferndale. I just don't want to see them in a giant parking garage, three houses down from where I live.
Thank you. I do want to react to one piece of that, which is, we are trying, maybe we don't always succeed, but we are trying our best to be as transparent, and open, and engaging as possible. Typically, in a community, when a developer wants to do a project, they put plans together, and they send it to the plan commission. We haven't even gotten there yet. So, all the town halls that we did last summer, tonight's meeting, and the additional meetings we have, are all designed for one thing, which is to get people's input, to get reaction, and to get more information. We haven't even got to the planning commission stage yet, which, like I said, would normally be the very first stage. So, we really are serious, I hope you understand that, about hearing your ideas and opinions, and that's, that really is what tonight is about, and what this process has tried to do, for better or worse. George.
Okay. My name is George Ayana Asaji, I've been here for 10 years. You're old, you have closed eyes, or closed brains, because nobody thinks what is good for the city is how can I bring it to better. You emphasize only West Nine Mile. They have a proverb, they say, if it's not broken, don't fix it. If I have his money, I will go to Hilton. Hilton is then the area. I revitalized Hilton, and East Nine Mile, and all the surrounding of that area. So, leave the West Nine Mile alone, and open your eyes, give me your money, I will make it for you in three years. Triple the money, from housing to commercial, you're revitalized the whole area, leave Nine, West Nine Mile alone. So, open your eyes, and go places where they need vitamin B, or Viagra, or whatever. Leave West Nine Mile alone, don't disturb it, it's working, don't fix it, you need some different area to be fixed. Give me $50 million now, I'll go buy every single building in Hilton, I will make it a garden, a new city, with the subway, and train, and park, give me $50 million.
I'll go for that plan, really?
Thank you.
All right.
So, why then you emphasize, what's this guy, what's this guy doing? He's going to benefit. How many cocktails he buys, how many dinners he buys. Go open your eyes, go to Hilton, and open that around the area.
Thank you, George. We're going to do just a few more folks, it's 10 after 7, so we're 10 minutes late, but I did want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak, if you really need to. And again, I want to reiterate that if you don't get your question or your comment heard today, that we do still want to hear them. If you go to our website, we would be delighted to have you, give you a response. And, good evening.
Hi, Mayor, hi, City Council. It is a very interesting representation of what we perceive, or what the council and the developers are perceiving for Ferndale for the future. I think one of the biggest concerns that I've had from the beginning, and a lot of the people that I've spoken to is, and Jake Siegel has alluded to, is the money, the budget. We need, if we're going to do this and go any further, we need to know, and we want to sit down and make an agreement. Well, before, I want to really emphasize, before City Council really does that, I think the residents and the businesses need to know, because you want to be transparent, are we selling these lots? Are we giving these lots away? Do we have to buy back these parking spaces, and at what cost? And I think, everyone in this room that lives as a resident, if we have to have a bond issued after the fact, to pay for these lots, that we need to know that...
Of course.
...before a deal is struck.
Absolutely, absolutely. And those sort of discussions are happening, we're not prepared tonight to give you a financial plan for this project yet, but absolutely, those things are being developed, and will be shared when they are.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I really, I really do, I really appreciate that, because not only am I a resident, but I also, I have a partner who owns a business here. So, that's one aspect. The other aspect is, at what cost? I know, we talked to somebody who's a CPA that sent you a letter, that said, they reviewed the finances of the city, and that there's like $40 million in debt, basically, that has to be paid forward to the retirement and insurances for the employees of the city. So, I understand why the city wants to do this, because you need to generate revenue, to make money, to secure the city, so it doesn't go bankrupt. And just as the city doesn't want to go bankrupt, neither do the restaurants, the businesses, the shops that are supporting the city. So, I understand your future, but without the support of everybody else, and it's not just retail, and I hope you guys can direct your parking people, as well as the design people here, that, everybody says retail, but if you really look at the parking amendments that you guys have to the charter, this isn't just retail. And I brought this up at the parking meeting. We really need to focus on what it says in the charter about space, and how many spaces are allotted for a bar, restaurant, and such. And I don't think that's been clear, and I don't think that's been done, as part of this study. And I think it's really prudent that this council really holds these people accountable to present an accurate demonstration of what the plan is. I looked at slides 67, 68, and 69, if you want to pull it up, it shows the parking entrance still behind Rosie O'Grady's, from my interpretation, and if I'm wrong, please tell me, because we have a safety concern, we have many children that cross that street.
It moved east.
Yeah, I heard what he said, but the representation in the PowerPoint slides don't show that. I understand he pointed and said it moved east, but when I look at it, in front of the white truck, it says parking. And there's only one exit from that parking garage to allow the flow of people to come and walk out. So, it's not, it could be ground-level parking, but is it really going to allow people to get out of the parking garage without having been filtered into one area, to go closer towards Allen Street, versus going closer towards where more of the businesses are? So, please, I mean, this is what we have to look at in the representation, that we have to, you know, gather our information of, and I don't, it's not as clear as what we hear, and it sometimes doesn't match up. So, I would like more transparency, if the council could do that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I'm going to let you be the last speaker, but I am going to address one thing you said, though, because I have to, and that is, the city is in actually good financial condition, we have an excellent bond rating, we have an excellent fund balance, we are not doing this to somehow find money for our pensions, which, by the way, are very healthy. So, I just want you to be, I want you to understand, the city's financial health is actually very good. So, this is not an attempt to somehow fund pensions, or, I don't know where that came from, but I just...
I'll just send you another email.
Please. All right, and you get to be our last speaker of the night on this issue. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Brian Siegel, Local Kitchen and Bar.
Yes.
I want to say that I love the development. I love the commitment, the creativity, I think it would add to the fabric of the community, I believe that, I know there's grave implications for many people who live around there, and that should not be understated. As a business owner, it's rare that a development would have such an overwhelming parking implication. And I think you would have to be unreasonable, as a business man, not to be concerned about what the implications are, when such a high percentage of the parking that serves your business is implicated in the development. So, my concern is, and I don't want to turn around, I don't want to direct forward, but in my own conversation with Jake, what I would say is that, since the parking implications are so substantial, and the fact that you are dealing with incredible design, incredibly creative people, to come to a presentation, even if it's out of order, even if there is another moment where parking mitigation will be addressed, and not to address it at all, concerns me, right? It makes, I think, people in here feel nervous, because it feels like the elephant in the room is being unaddressed. And I would say to Jake, because I have confidence in him, and I see how incredibly talented he is, that if he had an answer to that, that would satisfy people, he'd be presenting it. So, it makes me concerned that with all of this talent and all these resources applied, there's still a very significant problem...
But Brian, let me just say this, in defense of Jake, the parking mitigation plan is not the primary responsibility of the developer, it would be the city, working with the DDA, working with business owners to develop that plan, which is in process. So, I just want to clarify that it is not, that would not be solely, or even primarily, Jake's responsibility.
I understand, only in this sense, though. It's such a concern of the people working here, and on some level, this is a political process, and they're asking for the political process to move forward. So, my feeling is, is that it would be, it would be smart for them to allay the concerns of the business owners and the citizens by laying out their best ideas as possible, even if they're in conjunction with the city, so that we don't have to fret about it for the whole time. Thank you.
Brian, I appreciate it. I've said it before, but I'll say it again, we really do want to hear your concerns and thoughts and impressions of this. You have five representatives up here that you can get ahold of us, but Joe Gaochow, our city manager, you could find him on the website, also go to Ferndalemoves.com, more discussion to follow, but I want to, I want to thank the developers for your presentation tonight. It is drastically different than it was last July when we talked, so I do feel like you have, you've heard and done your best to address some of the major things that you've heard, and so we, as we said at the beginning of this meeting, we're not taking any action on this tonight, but I appreciate very much everyone who came out, who expressed themselves, who didn't but still will, and we will continue this process. So, thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. We will break for about five minutes.